Public hearing on an amendment. We're going to start with the site plan ordinance review amendment, and then we'll move on to the plastic bag ordinance after that. So at this time, I'd like to open a public hearing at 6 o'clock on May 15th for any comments about the amendment to the proposed amendment to the site plan review ordinance. Go ahead.
If that's say that is for commercial buildings.
Can I use that?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Site plan only relates to commercial.
Yeah.
Okay.
You just don't want to be confused with residential?
No, good question. Other questions or comments on amendment to the site plan review ordinance?
Do these get voted on, or is that what's going on?
These are both going to be voted on by secret ballot.
No.
No, this one goes on the floor of the town meeting.
This one's going to be, yeah.
So this goes to the floor of town meeting.
Okay.
The plastic bag is going to go to the secret ballot the day before.
Oh, no.
Yeah, along with all the marijuana ordinances, which will have a public hearing on on the 22nd.
They're going to be secret ballot?
The regular Tuesday vote.
Yeah, Tuesday vote.
No, it's the regular Tuesday ballot.
Election.
Election.
It's the election in Dayton, I mean.
Well, let's see for sure it is.
All right, any other comments or questions about the amendment to the site plan review ordinance? Go ahead.
On V, it says building facade colors shall be compatible with other buildings in the vicinity. Standard corporate and trademark colors shall be permitted only on signage. Who's going to make that determination? I mean...
The planning, yeah, planning board.
I mean, this is like zoning, so I mean, why don't you just do a zoning ordinance? I mean, this is basically what you're doing.
Well, it's not zoning, and then it doesn't tell you what you can put in a particular place. You see what I mean? This does say, and I believe this is a strengthening of existing language to try to make it clearer to businesses who are coming in and building a building. I mean, I would informally call this the Dunkin' Donuts ordinance.
I mean, their building looks nice.
But I think it took a lot of work through the planning board, and the planning board asked for this change of language so that it would be clearer. I think the planning board largely got what it wanted, but it wanted stronger language for the next time.
What are you saying, that if somebody comes in and their building's cream colored and the person next to them wants to put up a tan building, they're not going to be able to do that because the color might not be compatible with the building beside it?
That would go to the planning board, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there was already some language in here about this, and this is trying to make it clearer.
I mean, I'm just playing devil's advocate, you know?
Right, right. I mean, I don't think it's going to be a cream and tan. I think it's going to be a, you know, yeah, pink and purple, right? I think that's more what this is aimed at.
But if it's, if I understand that right, if it's a business and it's a certain trademark, just say like KFC.
Right.
Because those are those, their colors, they'd be permitted, is that correct?
No, I believe they would be permitted on their sign, but not necessarily in the paint of their building. I believe, I mean, that's how I interpret this ordinance. It wouldn't be that its colors were disallowed because they were corporate colors. I would think they would be disallowed because the corporate colors clashed or conflicted with what the planning board was willing to accept.
Well, since we don't have zoning, aren't you really restricting businesses from coming in? From using colors that, you know, is their trademarks?
I believe that's the intention to some extent.
To restrict businesses from coming in here?
No, to restrict businesses from using particular color schemes that would clash, or in other words, in other ways diminish the property values of their nearby neighbors.
But who's to say who it clashes with?
The planning, the planning board, the same people who have always...
I understand that, but what clashes to them may not clash to other people in their neighborhood. I mean, I don't get why you would be saying to, I'm just trying to think of a business that has McDonald's. You know, I mean, they have very subtle gray tones right now. But because other businesses may be cream colored, they're not going to be able to use the colors that are their signature?
I think that more of the issue for this is, and we've seen it in other places as well, when McDonald's comes in to build a McDonald's, this law is going to tell them, oh, you have to conform your building to this appearance, not you can't be here. It doesn't limit what business you can put in there. I believe that the wording was specifically put in so that when the planning board said, you know, you can't have a bright yellow building in amongst this historical district, or whatever, wherever it is.
I could see it in the historical district.
Right, but I think it's true...
I can't see it in other places.
And the planning board, in many cases, may say, yeah, that's fine. And the planning board isn't, this does not restrict signage.
I'm not talking about signs. I'm talking about building colors. I don't care about signs.
Is that an amendment to somebody's...
I'm talking about building colors and such.
Propose at town meeting?
No.
You can't make any...
Yeah, town meeting, this gets voted up or down. Yeah, so this went, I believe this went from the planning, I believe this went from the planning board as a request to the ordinance review committee. That is my understanding of how this came to be. Go ahead.
You kind of look at, look at Freeport and McDonald's down there. I don't know if they get zoning, but it's the concept there. If you want to stuck a McDonald's in Freeport, it'd be like here would ruin the place, but they've got...
That's your opinion.
Yeah, right.
Well, you want to put McDonald's where Key Bank is?
Why not? Wouldn't bother me, I mean.
Well, I'm not saying it's bad, I just, I think it's just to get it to kind of flow with what's in that immediate area.
For what?
Doesn't mean that they're not going to, that they're going to say it has to go that way.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, this language was chosen so that when the planning board comes out and says, you know, this really doesn't fit, they have a strong ordinance backing for that. Instead of it just seeming capricious and individual, they can say, no, we have this in our ordinance, and that's why. Because if I'm not mistaken, it took Dunkin' Donuts a long time back and forth with the planning committee to get the building that they have now in place. And there was a lot of compromise on their part on how they decorated that building. And there are people who feel very strongly about that. That's why the language is there. Whether or not everyone feels strongly about that, and whether people are willing to vote about this, that's another issue, but I think that's the intention of this ordinance. Again, people are free to vote for it or not. Other questions about the site plan ordinance change? Okay, well, we'll move on. So next on the agenda, I'd like to open a public hearing to discuss the commitment to eliminate single-use carryout plastic bags and single-use foam takeout containers. Questions or comments?
Is this specifically for carryout bags like the IGA and places like that?
Any business.
Okay, I have a question. I did a lot of research on this, and I kind of got busy with other things and didn't pay attention to it.
Can you hear? You can't hear me.
Oh, probably isn't important anyway. I did a lot of research on this way back on a computer about plastics. I also have a planning service for 35 years. And you're talking about carryout bags as being an issue. What about the garbage bags that I carry out of Northeast Bank? I carry out of the town office. I carry out of mortgage companies. I don't buy that. Loads, along with dog poop bags and...
I believe this is a start.
So you're going to start, all right. Then you're going to get into Pampers and the disposable, which lasts 3,000 years in a dump before they... So we go on, we're just starting with those kind of bags?
That's it. They're a made going.
Yes, there's a definition in the ordinance of what is and of how we're defining a single-use plastic bag.
So just, but they are, and I noticed too, and I hadn't noticed this before, in the IGA and Rite Aid, they're recycled. They have the bins, you put your plastic bag in the recycling things. They take them and they recycle plastic bags. That's where I take mine, okay? So are people using those recycling things for the one-use bags?
The box to put reusable bags in, or to recycle your plastic bags?
At the IGA, they have a big kind of thing that you put in your one-use bags when you get your food. I take it home, throw it in the closet. Then when I get enough, I take it up, there's a bin at the IGA, you put them in, and it's all recycled.
Absolutely. Do you know where those are recycled?
They send them down to, I ask, can't remember now, when I was really involved in this. And they have them at Rite Aid, and I think they have some other place around, and they're picked up. Now, where they're recycled, I knew, but I can't remember right offhand. But they are taken and are recycled. They say they are, so I'm assuming they are.
Yeah, so Bethel doesn't actually recycle plastic bags?
No, they don't recycle them. They're sent out.
Okay.
They're picked up.
And actually, recycling is a good option when you have plastic that you already have obtained, but we're trying to reduce the amount of plastic that we obtain in the first place. So instead of recycling the plastic bags, we're trying to eliminate them in the first place to reduce the amount of plastic that we're recycling.
Could that person speak up to the committee?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're trying to reduce the amount of plastic that we're recycling in the first place, because while recycling is better than throwing the plastic away, we're trying to reduce the amount of recycling we do because recycling is still harmful.
Go ahead, Jim.
How is, what is the idea of how you're going to institute this with these stores? Are you going to give them a time period that says by October 1st, you need to stop using the plastic bags? Or are they going to be able to use the plastic bags, and they're going to pass the cost on to the consumer, charging them a nickel a bag if they don't bring in a reusable bag? How is this going to be implemented if this goes through?
I can, so, just because I agree, I agree. So currently, this proposal says that the town manager or his or her or his or her designee shall be the primary responsibility for enforcement of the ordinance. Violations of this ordinance, as reported by the public, are to be investigated by the town. If the town manager or his or her designee determines that a violation of this ordinance has occurred, he or she shall issue a warning notice to the store that a violation has occurred. Subsequent violations of the ordinance shall be subject to the penalties established by the Bethel Board of Selecting. So currently, it's like a sign ordinance violation, right? You have a sign ordinance violation, and the, in the case of that, it's usually the code enforcement officer says you have a violation of the sign ordinance, fix it. And if you don't fix it, then it goes on to further discussion.
But are you going to give them a time specific that this is going to be instituted?
Currently, it reads when it's instituted, I mean, at time of meeting?
Right, it's great that they're going to, you know, somebody says, okay, they're still using plastic bags, and the town manager can go and give them a warning or whatever. But if they have a date, say like October 1st, you need to be done using plastic bags. I mean, that gives them time and other people to become aware and get used to the fact that these bags are going away. So wouldn't it behoove the store owner to know that, okay, the town's going to do this by October 1st?
Yes.
And they could put notices up in their store saying that also?
Right. I believe you're right. I agree with you, and I think we discussed this at the last select board meeting, if I'm not mistaken. We were, I believe, I believe the ordinance review committee read through and specifically looked, because currently it says this ordinance becomes effective immediately upon approval by town vote, which means that it would become effective the day after town, or on the day of town meeting, if it got voted in. At that point, our discussion as select board was, well, yeah, we're not going to start going after businesses on the next day. We're going to set a time for the, with the town manager to say, this is the time, and then communicate that to businesses so that they get, so they have time, so they know. And make it, you know, the same time for all businesses. And because there's going to need to be some discussion there about what's reasonable.
I just wanted to make a comment, and I think, I'm sure you expected a lot more people here for this, but... And to me, the people that it affects most is probably the older folks who, you know, use the handles of the plastic bags to carry out, and it's kind of hard for them to carry paper bags. But right now, many, many older folks are up at Crescent Park at an age-related community event, talking about how to make their life easier. So, you know, I'm sure they'd be here if they could, but that's going on till like 7 o'clock.
I just came from there.
Good, good.
Go ahead, Rick.
Mr. Chairman, I have several comments, and I hope you'll deal with them thoroughly. So you brought up one, or someone brought up one that was a concern to me, which is it states right in the ordinance that it will become effective immediately after town meeting. So therefore, the next day, this, it offends me because this ordinance is strictly to attack businesses. The next day after the town meeting, you folks can send us a fine or whatever you're going to do because we use the plastic bag the day after town meeting. Ordinance, you said differently, but the ordinance says that. So that's one flaw in this ordinance. The other flaw is that it says that the selectmen will be subject, businesses will be subject to whatever penalties the selectmen decide on. What are they?
We haven't discussed it yet. Good question.
So we're supposed to vote on something that's going to impose potential penalties to us, which we don't know what they are, correct? And the selectmen voted to put this on the ordinance, on the town warrant, before it was finalized. So when you voted to put this on the town warrant, you did not know what the final wording of the ordinance would be, is that correct?
I suppose that's true. I mean, we'd seen multiple iterations of it.
Multiple versions, but each time I came in to get a final version, there never was one. And you folks voted to put it on the town warrant prior to any final version being available. That's not the way to do business. The selectmen should be voting on something that they know exactly what it says. And another thing is, I understand this is being shoved down the throat of businesses by two co-authors. I would like to know if both of those people are registered voters and residents of the town of Bethel.
I am.
One.
I am.
So just one of the two, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I am 18.
Pardon me?
I am 18, yes.
Are you a resident of the town of Bethel?
Are you a registered voter of the town of Bethel?
I am a resident of Mason Township and grew up in Bethel for 18 years.
So you do not live in Bethel?
No, I do not reside in Bethel.
Okay, so I'm, again, that's a concern to me if we have people writing ordinances for the town of Bethel who do not live in Bethel.
I would agree with you, and I'm not going to argue too much with you because I understand what you're saying. But in this case, there is an author on this who is clearly a registered voter.
I just wanted to know how many of the authors were registered voters. And when I propose bike ordinance...
Can I say something to that for? This started as a school project, right?
It started with my individual project that I use for the school project.
All right, so we need to embrace that, that this was part of an educational process for a school that's within the school, in this town. So we need to embrace that and not bring it down for that.
Did I finish now?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead. I just wanted to point that out. Good, thank you.
Trying to gather my train of thought. The bike ordinance I proposed, which was shot down because people felt that the best way to work was to work together and cooperate through education. That's what should have been done in this case, rather than having an ordinance shoved down the throats of businesses. And I've said that all along, that this was not handled properly. This ordinance never saw an attorney until after it was voted to be put on the town warrant. That's wrong. Thank you.
Go ahead, Sally.
I have a suggestion to make that might not help. On the other hand, it might be helpful. This bag, it says, "Thank you for shopping here. Please reuse, recycle at participating store." And reduce, a little thing, reduce, reuse, recycle. This came from Cody's Store in Arrow, okay? Everybody gets a bag like this at Cody's if you keep it, if you buy one. And Cody's is up in Arrow, and the population is 265 people, okay? But it's 70 square miles. In other words, people coming there, shopping, they could be driving elsewhere, and if they didn't, if they weren't reminded of this every time they bought something there, they might just, you know, drop it by the side of the car. This is a very good idea, and I would suggest that as a possibility, rather than a ban, but it would be an educated process as well as a shopping process. This one I happened to get today is another bag like that that says, "Thank you, thank you, thank you. Have a nice stay. Please reuse or recycle at participating store." This is from the Bridgeton Bookstore in Bridgeton. Bridgeton has a population of 5,500, okay? So there are a lot of people there, and they come for the summer, they do all kinds of stuff. They could be dropping their bags out, but they're being reminded every time they shop at Bridgeton Books, and I don't know where else in Bridgeton. That's the only place I've been recently. And it seems to me a good way to educate people rather than just litter everything without options.
We're going to sort of go in, thank you. I'm looking forward to go in, give everyone a shot, and then we'll come back around to everyone. Alan?
Yeah. I think the state is enacting or trying to enact some laws right along these lines. I just wondered if there's been any research on what their rules and how they might pertain, and how we might be able to work our issue into the same terminology, I guess, and rather than have a separate law. I mean, I think they might end up overruling. It seems to be this is the way things are going. The big retailers are getting behind this, so... Has any research been done at all to see where the state is and how we might keep from having this argument here, just, you know, go along with what they've come up with? It seems like it's pretty forward-thinking. I don't know, have you guys looked into that at all?
Last week, I believe Janet Mill signed into law a ban on the polystyrene. So that would, that would in effect be very similar to this. I don't think it goes into effect until...
2021?
Yeah, 2021. So it doesn't completely address the immediate problem. But I think there's also some movement towards single-use plastic bag elimination at the state level, but it's not, that law has not been voted on by the Senate and gone into effect yet. But the polystyrene ban is, has been voted on and signed, and it will go into effect in a year. Go ahead.
I don't handle plastic bags or paper bags, anything like that, because I'm not a business that has that type of situation. But of all the businesses in Bethel today, I'm sure we're paying for those plastic bags when they go out the door because they have to buy them. So has anybody ever sent anything to the businesses if this went? Has anybody sent anything to the business by carrying my own bag in? My own paper bag or my own cloth bag, or something like that? That it could be a 1% discount or something like that? The other thing is, the people that are in business right now, I'm sure the IGA has one of the four plastic bags on hand right now. They probably got 4,000, or, you know, how many? And they got to have a timeframe, this thing went through, of where they can eliminate those bags in order to get their costs back.
I agree.
And, you know, it's an incentive for somebody to recycle and so on and so forth, to bring your own bag in. I like to have a cloth bag when I go in somewhere. I personally don't care for plastic bags. But they do come in awful handy when you scoop it up dog poop. So what are we going to do about that problem?
This doesn't address that issue.
I mean, if we go away with plastic bags, where are the dogs going to go?
I saw, it's funny, because I've been thinking about that.
We're just going to educate it right now.
Yeah, I've been thinking about that, and so the other day, I was watching someone who lives in town, who's lived in town for a long time, walking his dog down the street. And he had the pooper scooper in one hand and the dog in the other, and he's not using the plastic bags anymore. That's, and, you know, think about how, when did we start using plastic bags to pick up dog poop? It's relatively recent.
I'd rather see an incentive where somebody's going to bring their own material in to gather this stuff than the person that owns the store to pass it on.
Hmm. No, go ahead.
Firstly, I'd like to ask the gentleman in Bax who proposed the bag ban, if he attended our educational event where we hosted a screening of the movie Bagit that addresses many of the problems that we have concerns about, which is why we proposed this ordinance.
I can't even...
Oh, sorry, my bad. I'd like to ask the gentleman in Bax who proposed the bag ban, I mean, not the bag ban, the bike ban, if he attended the educational event that Sarah and I hosted at the German Movie Theater that was an educational documentary for the environment, which goes over the concerns that we have, which is why we proposed this ordinance. Did you attend this event last July?
I was out of where.
It was posted around Bethel on flyers in many businesses that have plastic bags.
Wasn't given to us.
I know, so...
Can we show it again?
Yeah.
Can we show it again?
Yeah, we are going to try to show it, I think, on May 30th, Thursday night at 6:30.
Really amazing film.
Okay, Scott, if you could hand up?
Yeah, every time I buy groceries, I'm given the choice, though, whether paper or plastic. And I always say plastic because A, they're easy to carry, and B, I reuse every one of them. In my household, we'd put plastic bags in this particular container, and that, every one goes in there, and that container's gone empty a couple times, but it's never ever flowed. So we use them. Is it on a farm? These don't get reused more than once, given the stuff I'm liable to put in them. But if I didn't have these bags that I got from the IGA to use, I'd have to buy other plastic bags, and where's the sense in that?
Gavin?
I think, I mean, what we have to do now is really think about reducing our waste and recycling and reusing are not really going to apply very soon because we're just running out, like, there's no market for recycling anymore, and so there's nowhere for it to go, and it just never breaks down. So we're producing something that, even if you use it again for something, it's still going to end up in the garbage, and it's never going to break down, and it's...
Yes, but if you dispose of it responsibly, then that's not an issue. The issue's with people that...
It's really, it's not, it's just, even if you're putting it into the garbage, it's really, all our trash is, I mean, I've been talking to Cassella. I think they, the town has been very helpful to me in like being in contact with Cassella Waste. very helpful to me in, like, being in contact with Cassella Waste, and there's, it's going into our waste stream, and there's nowhere for it to go. They're burning it in state, or it's going in a landfill. Even our recycling, the market for recycling has dropped out. There's nowhere for our recycling to go. It's costing us a fortune. I don't know if you guys know how much money we're spending on our waste. I mean, just between July and February, we did the math for, and the town, just Bethel, spent $153,000 on getting rid of our waste. And so plastic bags and phone containers are just like the low-line fruit that we can take care of. But it can't, those things can't be recycled. I know they have a little triangle on them, but they can't really be recycled. There's really nowhere for it to go.
I don't recycle them. I reuse them, and then I put them in the trash.
Right.
And if they get, and if they get into the environment after that, that's Cassella's fault, not mine. One other thing that plastic bags are good for is you can sit them on a wet surface and still count on the, you can still rely on the integrity of the bag when you pick it up. Can't do that with a paper bag.
Well, we're really encouraging people not to turn, now turn to paper, because it's environmentally bad, too. I mean, it's still wasted, so uses electricity, we really want, I mean, we're not, no, but I mean, no, no, but I mean, if we think the best thing would be to use reusable bags.
Why don't we use cloth diapers? And then, nobody has to deal with the 3,000-year...
We did. If they weren't way better.
I mean, way back, I did. They didn't have diapers, but I'm saying the new generation, the new, other people do.
We must do.
Most, the majority, the majority.
Sorry, just my, is, I haven't used, you know, asked for a plastic bag in the business probably in five years, and I'm still overwhelmed with plastic bags. Like, if anything is shipped to me, coming from plastic, and that's what I, I have a dog, and when I walk the dog in town, I don't carry my pooper-scooper, I do use a bag to pick it up, but I use one of the other bags that I'm getting. It doesn't have to be the grocery bag.
The produce bags that we are not getting are very similar to the poop bags that you can get on the market.
Produce bags.
The Cody's bags that you put your apples and...
There's a definition, in the definition section of the ordinance.
What about, I saw that, but I didn't understand what it was.
Yeah, I wasn't sure either.
It's just some of us don't understand, look, you've studied, and if you didn't see that movie, it's not somebody's fault, because they didn't see the movie, even though it might have been a great movie.
Absolutely not.
So I do agree, I think education is huge, and for myself, I've been educating myself for a number of years on how to live a plastic-free life, and it changes your whole approach to how you do things. But if you do it one step at a time, and I agree with everything you're saying, I use cloth diapers, I don't use plastic bags, I recycle the few things that I have to buy, but mostly I use cloth, I use glass. You can lead a plastic-free life, but it has to start somewhere. And what they're talking about is just starting with the simple stuff of using a cloth bag when you go to the grocery store. That's all they're asking you to do, use a cloth bag. You've got used to it, just like you got used to taking, I don't know, it's changing habits. And you know what, I'm not done, I wanna say one more thing.
Oh, go ahead.
Is I have children, and my children are gonna have children, and I want them to have a world to live in. We're not gonna be here for it, but we're filling it up with our garbage. We are destroying things, and we're filling it up with garbage, and somebody has to put their foot down and stop it, and maddying, and it makes me so sad that you people can't realize what we're doing. And it's so simple, like, just be willing to change your habits a little bit, that's all they're asking for. I'm done.
In the back? No, you, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Sorry. I'm sort of like in-between everything, too, because I understand the true need to start somewhere, and I think it would make a great impression for people to come to Bethel to see that we're really trying to do something in this, and it is a big educational process. I personally don't like plastic bags. I have a bad arm, and those stupid things cut into my hand, and I don't like them. So I do use my own recyclable bag. I carry a bag everywhere. I sometimes can't do it all the time, sometimes I just walk out with something in my hand. But I think it's a real important thing for us to try, because people come to Bethel because Bethel's different, and it's clean, and it's unique, and it's progressive, and I think this is an ideal way to start doing it.
Jane?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm all for recycling, and I take my bags and I recycle them. I mean, I've got two big bags, plastic bags at home. I recycle them, I put clothes in them, I put stuff in that I'm gonna take to camp, like paper products that I don't wanna put in the trash, paper plates, towels and stuff like that, and then I use them to start my campfire down at camp. I mean, that's a way of recycling. And I don't think it's fair that, when you say, "I'm offended by you people," this is a whole educational process. And if you think about it, back in the 60s, didn't have this problem. You had paper bags, you had diapers, you had cloth diapers. You had, you know, everything's so organic, that's the only way we grew in the 60s was organic. I mean, and now it's a big thing. You know, you're basically going back to the way things were, but, and there are a lot of people that do that. I can my own vegetables, I make my own jams, pickles and things like that. It's a learning process, but you can't force it down people's throats, just like, this is effective after the town meeting. You gotta give them a timeframe for people, and it should be posted in stores that says, "As of this date, these bags are going away." I have no problem with it. I mean, my biggest problem is, I walk and I ride my bike and everything, and I don't see a lot of these grocery bags. I see dog poop bags, you know, on, you know, that people drop. There was one on the parkway the other day, took a picture, posted on Facebook. It just disgusted me that people cannot, it's the people, it's the adults, it's not the dog. You know, it's a learning process, and I have no problem with recycling, but we've gotta give these businesses the time to do, just like the state is doing it. They've got the phone containers going into effect 2021. We should do something like that, too. We need to have a date specific. There should be, the town should buy signs for all the stores to put it up, to notify the people, that as of this date, plastic bags are going away. But, yeah, if it passes.
There you go.
But does that mean, like, she has recyclable bags right there. Does that mean that those would be banned? If it's a recyclable bag? I thought that's what you wanted.
Right.
I believe they're talking about reusable bags, like the heavy-duty shopping bags, as opposed to, as it turns out, the recyclable, but those recyclable bags are not recyclable.
But I would think they would be, in my little mind.
I know, because they have the symbol on them and everything.
Right, and that's what I would think, you know.
And it's not, and it's not true.
But I think the big thing is a date, a timeframe.
I agree with you, and that, I believe that's, I know that's our intention. I, you know, again, our goal here is not to, you know, yeah, make this completely unworkable. People are gonna have to work through their supply of bags, to some extent. People are gonna need time to make adjustments and change things, and I think it's, and we also need to be, you know, we can't say to one business, "Oh, you have to stop by this date, you have to stop by that date." I think that's, but we need to, I mean, I think part of the reason we haven't set a specific date is because we don't even know if this is gonna pass yet. And then once it passes, if it passes, if it doesn't pass, then, it doesn't pass. If it passes, then, you know, we're gonna need to work with the local businesses and say, "What's a reasonable timeframe to get this done?" Andy?
One of the things I think that's really nice about living in a small town is people can work together, and so I think that what Christine said is right, that we need to, we need to start thinking about the environment now, but for the people who have concerns, we've got this whole town full of people to help. So if Scott needs help saying, "Okay, I've got this garbage at home, and I've been putting it in plastic bags, what can I do?", then there are a whole bunch of people that can get together and say, "Hey, I've got an idea, I've got an idea. Hey, what about this?"" And I think that there's ways to help, and with people who have a lot of stuff that's coming in to be shipped, and so they have this plastic, these plastic bags, and someone else is like, "Oh, I really need just something to put things in," and someone else has these other plastic bags that are coming in from somewhere else, they can say, "Hey, I can help you out there." And if you're a store, and you're like, "I don't know where to get my bags from," we've got all these businesses in town for people to get together and work together to solve those. So I don't think it has to be like, "Oh, well, too bad, you're just stuck, you didn't like this idea, so figure it out on your own." I think we've all got all these great resources, people, to work together to come up with those ideas.
Alan, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, the one thing that you're forgetting that you're doing to the businesses is costing us more money to buy paper bags. I am a tourist business. I do not survive on a lot of the local customers. We have some. But my customers are not going to bring in one of those plastic reusable bags. They're not gonna be traveling to Bethel, not on the whole, anyway, with bags packed in their suitcases, thinking, "This is what I'm gonna go shopping with." They need a bag. So if I cannot use reusable plastic bags, which I now have in the store, that have that little mark on them, I've had reusable bags all along that have said that, I will have to buy paper bags with handles and sturdy bags, and you can get at the grocery store, say. That costs us, as opposed to a 4-cent plastic bag, the cheapest one will be 25 cents. Now, we go through probably a couple thousand bags, at least. I have never actually counted them, but between both stores, but definitely this store must go through at least 1,000 in a year. That's a significant amount more that we have to spend on a paper bag, okay? I don't, people are welcome to bring in recyclable bags. I personally use those myself grocery shopping. I do understand, though, that those recyclable bags that we have, that are, they're made of some kind of a plastic, and those aren't all that recyclable either. And eventually, someday, those bags with the handles, with reusable bags with the handles that you can buy for $1.50 or $2.00 or something when you're at Hanford or somewhere, are gonna be very difficult to recycle someday as well. That's something I've been told. Now, some of those reusable bags are cloth, but a lot of people have been complaining about the cloth when you put the meat in them, because the meat makes the cloth, gets into the cloth, and that's E. coli dangerous. So, you know, there's a lot to this. And like I said, we're not against recycling. We do a lot of recycling in our business. No one's ever asked, but we do. But the plastic bags, that's the problem, it's the cost. Paper bags are gonna cost us a lot more. If the town of Bethel wants to buy bags for us, fine. Absolutely don't.
Kath, you had one?
Well, I was just gonna say, like, I just didn't know what Andy said, like, I have a spice business, and we, part of our mission is to be zero waste, and yet, every day I'm throwing away, like, heavy-duty gallon plastic bags that I would love to give to somebody who would have to use for them. I was, I was like, I thought that was an interesting idea, because I probably is still so much garbage that we could easily fill in all the holes for all the people that actually would need to use the plastic bags. My understanding is that, like, only, even if there are some people in this room that are like, "I've reused every single plastic bag I have," the, I know the statistics on it, is that only like 3% of the bags actually are reused. And regardless of who reused them, they still do it up in the waste stream. But like, you know, I know these people who use them, I don't doubt that. I stopped taking them a long time ago at the grocery store, and I have a cat, which I've now switched to the flushable litter, so I don't need a bag, but for a while I was using like a cereal bag or a nacho chip bag. You don't realize how much plastic you bring into your house until you like really stop paying attention, start paying attention. So I just, I think there are actually a lot of solutions to the problems people are bringing up, even if it seems like there aren't, it just doesn't seem obvious. I think, I just think it is really important, what Andy said, that there's a lot of people already doing this stuff, and so the more we can talk about it and educate each other, and maybe work together, because like, I would love not to be throwing away a lot of the waste. It is eventually gonna get thrown away, and I understand that, but if someone else can make use of it, that would be great. I'd love to remember who those people are, and that's what...
I would love to talk to you about those problems.
Craig, good answer. Craig, good.
Yeah, I thought, that's a thought I had, is, there's a lot of people in town have their boat streaked wreck. There's a lot, and take Amazon, everybody uses Amazon.
It's Amazon now?
You get the little school flakes in there, you get, you get all kinds of plastic from them. Where are we gonna put that stuff? I mean, we buy from these people, we get the plastic, I'm not gonna put it in the attic. What decision is Bethel gonna have to put that stuff? Where are we gonna put it?
Apparently, I think one of the big problems is, there is no place to put it anymore. I mean, you can incinerate it. That's about the only make-it-go-away option there currently is. We used to ship it to China.
Not you personally.
You don't have to incinerate.
Don't incinerate.
But, but, we used to ship it to China, and China has decided that that's, they don't want it. And so now there is no place for it anymore, unless someone really, really clever...
Well, I'm trying to say, it's just not plastic bags.
No, no, it's not just plastic bags.
Everything bubble wrap.
Right. No, it's, there's a lot, I mean, as...
There's a one specific dealing with that, okay? It's just the plastic bags from the point of sale. Like, there's a really specific definition of it.
Yeah, but if we're gonna get fined for having the stuff...
You're not gonna get fined.
These businesses. We're gonna get fined.
Sally, next.
I found out just today that Rennies will only use plastic, uh, paper bags. Who? Rennies. And Rennies is a big discounting store. They are, obviously, they figured out how to save money for you. I don't know how, somebody could talk to them, find out where they order from, maybe they've got a deal. There might be ways to find others to help them.
Savannah?
Yeah, I just think, a few really compelling arguments have been brought up, and Craig, I think your point's really true. It's the "not in my backyard" argument. I think that's been going around since probably the 70s, and, you know, yeah, that's a great question, where does all this waste go? And so I think what we have here is a great opportunity as a small community to take a step in the right direction, and the time is now. Like, I totally agree that having a timeline, informing people, that's always really important and great, but the time is not, let's wait until the state of Maine does it, let's wait until Washington does it. Like, the time is now. Whether or not you like it, the climate is changing, the future for our children is bleak, and we all appreciate the freedom that we have living here, but we're not gonna be here forever, and we need to be thinking about future generations, and this is one small step that we can take that has the potential to make a big difference. And, you know, right, like Christine said, she uses glass, so I'm not, I definitely do, but if I didn't, I could, if I had a resource and help me figure out how to do that stuff, like, that's, that's what we need to do. That's the strength of the Bethel area community, so, but I just wanna say, like, the time is now. The time is not, like, let's wait and talk about it some more, the time is now.
Where are we gonna get rid of the plastic? That's, I don't think that would be the first step.
I think, I think in this particular case, that's, it's too big a question for, I mean, this is, this is, as far as I understand it, this is standard getting rid of one of the most straightforward and obvious pieces, but, but I agree, you're asking a great question. I just don't think that this addresses that, that, I mean, it's a first step, but to put a whole, you know, omnibus plastic package in place is not, maybe not within, maybe not the right starting place. Go ahead.
I'm a bit surprised, remember, before plastic was invented, and we lived in other places. And I'm sure that we're never gonna go back to no plastic, but we can certainly do with less. And one of the things I've discovered recently, and I'm really hopeful about this, is that cellophane, when we were kids, was what you used if you wanted something that was waterproof, more or less, that would protect things. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that the IGA is now bagging some of their bread in cellophane. It feels like cellophane. Cellophane is very biodegradable. It does break down, it doesn't stay in the environment. And so, and I'm confident that there are ways of doing this, that if you need to pick up dog poop, you could pick it up with a cellophane bread bag and turn it inside out, just like you do with plastic, and you wouldn't have to use a mess. Ideally, you should bring it home and throw it in the toilet, rather than throw it in the trash, because who wants to find trash with poop in it? Anyhow, my, the other special thing I'd like to make is that recently, somebody was quoted in Bethel as saying that one of the nice things about Bethel is that this is a kind community, there's sort of a kindness in this community. There's sort of kindness in this community. I think that's true. And so, in an issue like this, we're going to have winners and losers. We all have thoughts about this. Some of us are favoring this, and some are opposing it. And these are all good people who have given good thoughts to this issue. They have good reasons for why they're saying what they're saying. So my concern is, are we going to be sore losers? Are we going to blow it to win? Or are we going to get together as a community and say, "We're the people who thought it over. This team won that one, didn't this time, but we're making a try and trying to do what's the right thing for the future." So, it is hope.
Go ahead, Jane.
Just to respond to that, I don't think that the people in Bethel look at it as a win or a lose. You know, I think the people in Bethel are, you know, it is what it is, and whatever happens, happens, and people go along with it. Maybe that comes from the way the country is and people being divided. But, you know, I don't see that when things happen here, you know, we won, we lost. But I also want to ask the question of the lady that has a spice business. Your plastic jars that you send out and mail out, how do you, how do you take care of those when you send them? Do you have to have those little styrofoam pop combs?
I use all cardboard, and I really do. But, yeah, I mean, their jars are pretty sturdy though.
Yeah, because I wondered, you know, how does that affect people that ship things?
No, our biggest waste is, you know, on stickers, the back of the paper that you peel off the back of the sticker. That's not recyclable, it's coated in plastic. I mean, that's the biggest waste thing I have to deal with right now that I can't figure out.
So I just was curious how they will deal with that, if they use those little foam pop combs things.
But I also, like, this ban is only at a point of sale. So for me, as an online business, I don't actually have a point, mostly I don't have a point of sale. In general, besides, I got a few or something. I don't use plastic bags, but I know I was thinking, like, I buy paper bags, but I'm sure I could buy them a lot cheaper if I were buying them with 10 other businesses in town. Like, I, you know, we could buy more, I bet we could get better price points. I think that's something for us to think about, too.
I think, Kath, you were, Patty, sorry, you're Patty.
Okay.
Oh, that to the effective date. I'm not sure how, why that's blank, and then if you think...
I was trying to...
Yeah, I thought the intention, please correct me if I'm wrong, was to make that effective January 1st, 2020, to align Dunkin' Donuts ban on... It just seemed like it was, they were going to ban foul plastics and styrofoam nationwide. And I don't know why we were going to align, do you remember that?
Well, I mean, we left it blank, asking you all, and then...
You all being the ordinance committee?
The ordinance committee.
Right.
And because we didn't know what was a reasonable...
I think it probably just fell.
I think when it went to legal, it might have gotten knocked on.
Well, then, yeah, because then I asked, like, why isn't there an effective date?
And then it was true, right, we'd already had it to slotting, had it in jackets and stuff, and we decided that there's going to be a date, it could be done.
Because we were worried, I know what the intention is. I think, Sarah, am I right about the intention was 2020?
Yeah, we wanted to give people enough time. I mean, I think originally we thought that a reasonable time would be like right before the ski season started. I believe we talked about in November effective date, so that when the, you know, population comes through, we'd be ready. That's the only date I remember, but I totally agree that people have to... We can't just turn, do this overnight, and that is not our intention to throw down the prices quote the next day if it's intentional.
So...
This doesn't include average days, does it?
No.
No.
So go, one, two, three. Question?
It's just a question from you folks, because I keep thinking about the 25 cent bag, and that seems crazy. Like, do we know what Portland does, or the other towns? Do they have a, like, a standard fee that you pay for a bag, or?
Portland, we originally had the five cent fee because we wanted to help with that problem, but that was also...
But then they're losing money if it's five cents.
Right.
I don't understand, that's the part for me, I'm struggling with is like, how did those small businesses who want to try to make it happen, like, how can we make it so that they're not stop absorbing the cost?
Right, yeah, that's why we had entertain a fee for the paper bags in the original draft of the ordinance. I believe this was in the first two, over the four ordinance review committee meetings. But after negative comments and replies and reviews from the public, we took the fee off from the ordinance because it didn't seem fitting because it's not what the public wanted.
But businesses are able to charge whatever they want, like that.
Yeah, now you can, you can choose not to sell paper bags. You can put quota on the number of paper bags you will sell in a month or give away in a month. You can sell them for what you would like.
Yeah, if you want to charge 25 cents, there's no rule that you can, but you can do that.
We're not going to charge for the bag, but the point is that we're not just going to charge, have us charging for bags. We're going to have to inventory the bags, and we're going to have to keep track of that, or we're going to suck it to them. This is what their first ordinance said.
I don't understand.
There was a lot more to it, having us charge people, which didn't cover the cost of the first place, so...
There are many businesses, I believe, in Valpass and Thomas, I believe is another town I looked at, who don't give away paper bags in response to a plastic bag ban, because they didn't want to cover the extra price of buying paper bags, so they got rid of giving away bags altogether. Not that the ordinance told them to, but they made that decision because of the financial burden. And they are still finding these are too tourist-driven communities.
So, I have just two, two things that I was going to get that. There's a visitor center that I go to down in Massachusetts, and they're definitely a tourism-driven place, and they don't give away bags, and they charge as buck, as a reusable bag. You can charge a buck, or you can walk out with your product. So when we're on vacation, I either walk out with it, put it in my bag that I put on my shoulder, I paid the dollar. So I think tourism, tourists, I don't think will mind paying 25 cents or a dollar or whatever to have that bag, but walk out with a product. But, so that's one thing. The other thing is, I was on the ordinance committee, my name is Mary Scanlon, and I did take the really responsibility to research whenever we talked about different items. And one thing I did, because I had that concern about how do we ramp up for businesses, like, to educate businesses? So I first looked at other towns that enacted business, these plastic ban ordinances, and there wasn't really any great resources in this data made of like how other towns like launched this out. So I was like, what other town, where is a big community that just is going through this? And that's Boston, downtown Boston, they have banned plastics. And you can go search, research Boston's plastic ban, and they have how to handle the new plastic bag ordinances for a resident and for a business. So that's a great resource for everybody here, because Boston's big, they have a lot of money. They clearly have invested a lot of energy on how to educate their businesses and their residents on how they handle plastic bag ordinances. So I just want to put that out there, you go to boston.gov, and there's a full welcome to each meeting.
In 40 years of doing retail here in Bethel, if I thought charging for a bag was a good idea, I would have done it 40 years ago. I value my customers when they come in, and I would not charge them for a bag. And I've talked to a number of people who have done what you said, paid for a bag, and then said they'd never go back to that store again. So that's the side of the picture that you folks, some of you don't see. And that's really bothersome. I mean, like, with the reusable bags, those are great, but a couple from Texas traveling through probably doesn't have a reusable bag in them. And I have to now send them out in the rain with some big product that's going to get rained on and wet, because I can't give them a plastic bag to a company. I have much more faith in humanity and human ingenuity to think there'll be a way to use up plastic bags. It may be grinding them up, putting them in pavement. Again, in the 60 years I've been alive, there's been a lot of changes, a lot of threats, and most of them kind of go away, or a solution comes up. And I do believe that eventually there will be a solution to the plastic bags. And if, in fact, attacking businesses wasn't the general idea, why didn't we ban diapers? Because that's a huge problem with the landfill. And the answer to that question is because it would never pass through a town meeting. But just attacking the businesses, that's an even bigger goal, because there's only a handful of businesses in town, and probably a few of them agree with that. But you didn't attack the whole owners because you knew that would not fly. And I would ask that question, what do I do with products on a rainy day? Just say top lock to my customers and send them out?
You can walk them out with an umbrella. Small-town service.
So, no, I would...
Like, using workhorses, it's kind of different, although then people often downstairs would have their umbrella.
So there's a lot more to this ban than just, you know, a couple people feeling good about themselves.
Go ahead, Kate.
There was a UN report that was released last week, and we're on track to lose 80% of the species on this planet. And coming up with some solution for the plastic bags is not going to happen soon enough. And then they just, this week, they had a diver submarine go to the deepest depths ever in the ocean, and there was plastic. And we're overrun with it, it's just a problem.
So I've been doing a lot of listening, and everyone has great points. And what I'm hearing is one, a timeline, people change this hard, it doesn't come easy, and people need time to change, so a timeline would really help. I think that's a great idea. I'm also hearing that people want help to make that change, and people want to have their voice heard in the midst of that change. I've heard some great suggestions that might address that, you know, like, we're a small community, we're a close-knit, we're kind to one another. Regardless of what happens in the vote, there's no reason why we couldn't have regular meetings for interested people that could brainstorm and problem-solve about how we could move towards making this change. And then someone in the front mentioned, you know, that there are other towns that have done that. There's no reason why we couldn't invite businesses from those towns to come and be guest speaker, to give us ideas and suggestions and support. And then hopefully, those kinds of ideas would help people feel like they had a voice, we give them support to make the change and the time to make the change. I do think that there are other things happening, but maybe they aren't being... It's hard sometimes to advertise when you're doing things that doesn't always reach everybody that you want it to. But I think there are some efforts working with, with our town dump to talk about just how much is it costing us? Where exactly are we getting any recycling done? Is recycling even happening? I think those conversations are occurring, but it might not be getting out to everybody who would like to hear that information. I also think there's some educational, informational efforts going on in the elementary school, and some effort to get recyclable bags to businesses. But again, I don't think maybe that's not general information that's getting out there. So again, change takes time, and it takes a large effort and energy, and it's one small step after another. But again, we're a kind, small-knit community that if we all work together and show an interest in this, and spread the word yourself, like, hey, I went to this meeting, and they're talking about some good stuff. Next time, bring three friends with you, so that we can really spread the word. I think that will all help make the change for everybody, and maybe the businesses can feel they do have the support of the town, we do love that they have a business there. And one final point to make is, I shop sometimes at the Good Foods store. They don't use paper bags or plastic bags, they use their shipping boxes. So if you want something to carry your stuff out with, it's a shipping box. And plenty of tourists shop there, they don't seem to have a problem with business. But on the other hand, I also sometimes shop at Nafla, and probably there's not very many tourists going to Nafla. They're mostly locals, but they don't use plastic or paper either. I think you're either carrying your stuff out in your hands, or you, again, are taking a box that their stuff has been shipped to them. So I do think that there are businesses, again, already here doing this successfully. But again, it's just not, the word's not out there, like, how are they doing that? How do they feel that affects their business? So, you know, maybe they'd be willing to come talk to us about that.
Other questions or comments?
I was glad to hear what Sherri said, because although I haven't kept up with this ordinance all the way through its changes, I swore there was something in the first one about a timeframe, an ample timeframe for businesses. So who, if the select board decides that, you don't have time to decide that before voting? Can't you?
No, this is, this is the public hearing before the vote.
Right, but the public hearing isn't your decision on what that timeframe could be. You meet before town meeting. Is there any way that you can figure out what that timeframe would be and post it when it's voting time?
Yes, we could, we could do that and not have to be part of the ordinance.
Because it's not part of the ordinance now, anyway.
That's a good, that's a really good point. So we could, at our June selectmen's meeting, which happens before this vote, we could, maybe it'd be a great idea to pass a, or to have a statement from the select board that we vote on and said, "If this goes into effect, this is how we see it." This is the timetable we see, that would probably be really helpful.
And if that wasn't soon enough, I mean, sometimes you put in an emergency meeting to, before, like, in between.
In this case, I don't think that...
You see, but you could research it before.
If we were looking for that statement about how, a specific timetable for this, then we could, we could make that statement before this vote.
And that might help some people.
Yeah, that's a good point.
But I really love listening, and the words about community and Ani's ideas, like, I use my plastic bread bags a lot of times, but not every one. But I'd be glad to take them someplace for people, for the dogs, for the dog poop. And I don't know about the plastic-coated backing, but what did you say that you use for packing with your glass jars, cargo?
No, I, we just, we ship out all our jars with the materials we get, so they come in cases, boxes.
Couldn't that stuff be ripped up, though, and used for packing?
Well, it's not recyclable, I'm not going to send it to my customers.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that's the reality, like, most of my customers are people who are plastic-free or zero waste. I can't send them plastic.
And that gentleman should get plastic bags from you, so it could all work.
Yeah, I think part of the problem, what was just said, is that the ordinance states that it will go into effect the day after the election, so...
It also says that the, that the ordinance will be enforced by the town manager, his or her designee. So that gives us the select board the leeway to tell the town manager when we want that enforced.
But when we vote for it, we're either voting the ordinance up or down.
That's correct. So we can't change this ordinance. We could put out a statement from the select board that we had voted on that said, "If this goes into effect, then here's what we see for the timeline."
But in the meantime, any business that gets out a plastic bag the day after is violating the ordinance.
No.
It is one, no, use common sense.
Well, he's looking right where it's written.
So it is, it is written that way, and one thing I guess we have to consider, maybe we can ask a lawyer this, just... Because we got into a similar issue with the side ordinance, but the side ordinance, I think, went longer, where it wasn't enforced, and then it kind of was tried to be enforced, and then we, and so I'm, one thing that... And again, that's why I think maybe what a lawyer that question is, if we did, if we enacted it but chose not to enforce it for a time period, are we setting a precedence that we would then be in trouble for? Or if we, or is the time period short enough that that doesn't matter? Or is the, or is the fact that we maybe come up with a time for that?
I think the same, we had the same issue with additional dwelling units on the sorbo, which have been...
I think the way we go through town managers? We better have some specific thing that's going to take place.
If we're voting on this town meeting, can't we amend it?
No.
We can't amend it?
We can amend, we can amend financial values, but we can't amend ordinance. Oh, and it's also, it's going to vote before the town meeting.
It's a reference vote.
Oh, it's Tuesday, then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Can you change it so you can do it at town meeting instead?
No, the ballots are already printed.
Oh.
When is the soonest that it could be actually amended?
It can't be amended now unless, you can amend it, but you have to hold another public hearing.
Right, so after town meeting, there could be another public hearing. And then does the whole town...
After town meeting, you could amend it and have another public hearing, but you have to have another vote.
Yeah, so, so the, the ordinance as it stands can pass, the enforcement can be adjusted by the select board. It says it right in it. We, the select board decides on what the enforcement's going to look like in terms of, is there going to be a penalty? Is there going to be a repercussion? That's in the ordinance. The select board can also adjust the timing. I, I think it would be helpful to people, as, as a lot of people have pointed out, if at the June Select Board reading, which happens before this gets voted on, the selectman came out with a, the select board came out with a specific statement that says, if this passes, this is what the timing would be, so that people can see it.
Where would the statement be?
It could be on the, and the usual places, town website, Bethel Citizen.
Will it make the paper before town vote?
Monday is the select meeting.
June 3rd.
And then the vote's not until the following week. Yeah, yes.
But you have to keep in mind, people can absentee vote anytime now.
Right.
So absentee is our real name.
Okay. So I, I would propose, and I think Loretta wrote that down, to put on our next agenda that we need to, the select board needs to put a time on it. And, and that would help people out, except for the people who had already voted absentee. But it would come in time to go in the paper.
Can it be hung after voting?
It can be, I mean, that, it can be hung anywhere, except on telephone poles. As far as I'm aware.
Other questions or comments? Go ahead.
At first, I was very against this. And I did some research on my own, and I've also been listening to you guys about everything that's been going on. I'm glad you put in here that it does not include farm stands, because they reuse. They recycle, they get recyclable bags from everybody, and they, and they reuse them. I'm also glad to see that you took out the part about the mandatory inventory and the cost of charging a customer for the, for the stores to do. I think that this is a better idea than what you first started out with. I don't think that it's, I don't think it's enough. I think there's still some components missing in this that we need to work on. The effective date is one of them, but also the single-use bags, even though they say they're not recyclable, they say on them that they can be recycled, but they can't be, because they, they are still doing damage. I think the state is coming up with a lot more, harder laws than what we are going for. But I want, I just wanted to commend you for all your hard work and for really, really diligently listening to everybody and taking out the parts that people really had a problem with, especially the stores in this town. Because they were looking at having to hire somebody to do the inventory of the bags, and to look at trying to charge their customers. The recyclable bags that they sell for 99 cents or a buck and a half, people are using them more and more every day. I'm seeing that in different stores, not only in town here, but all the other stores. The problem is, is, I have a problem with it, is I put all my recyclable bags in the back of the car, and I go in the store and forget them. I know a lot of people that do that. You know, you're paying for the bags, but you still, you don't use them, because they're stuck in your car when you're checking out. But I just, like I said, I just wanted to commend you guys for doing the diligent work that you have, and I hope you keep it up.
Well, thank you for your comment.
Chris.
I wasn't really going to comment, but I, I don't think I can leave without comment. Relatively new to the town, been here less than a year, I definitely sense this is a place that loves its environment. It's an important part of who we are as citizens here. I don't think that, or I think when, when groups like this get together and they have a conversation, somewhat of a debate on a, on a topic, I think it's really important to be able to reach an agreement on something. It would surprise me if we couldn't agree that our environment is not as healthy as it used to be. In fact, when we were 16, 17 years old, the earth was much healthier than it is now. And so I just want to applaud a younger generation for trying to do something to clean up the mess that we've left them. And I hope we can agree and unite that, one, the environment isn't as good as it used to be, and to recognize and applaud the effort of younger citizens for trying to make a difference.
60 years ago, the Andescogut River, you couldn't fish. That's how bad the environment was with the river, 60 years ago. But because of things that they've done, the river is now, you can rap in it, you can kayak in it, you can swim in it, you can fish in it, you can eat the efficient...
Once a while.
Yeah, once. But, you know, 60 years ago, that river, and it would smell, it just was gross. So the river has come a long ways because of what's been going on over the years.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I don't intend for this to be particularly controversial, but who knows? Some people are not going to believe the next statement that I'm going to say, but it, you know, if you know me, which I do, people in here do, I think you will be able to believe it. I agree with everything that's been said in this room, except for one thing, and that's, and that's, that's it. I agree with everything. I agree with the, the arguments that the businesses have made. I agree with the arguments about the environment. I agree with keeping our environment clean. I agree with trying to take steps. A lot of, especially over here, I heard a lot of comments about working together and doing things like that. I think that's what we should do. Hopefully, a few things will come out of that. It sounds like a couple things I already have. I, I agree with all of that. My, my hang-up is the method of which we go, choose to go about doing that. And that, and this is probably kind of what gets to the root of a lot of, a lot of disagreements amongst things. Me personally, I don't think that, I would rather see us doing that as society and not us doing that as, as a government, making somebody do that. I don't want, you know, if this ordinance passes, I'm not going to be greatly offended. I'm not going to, I don't think that this ordinance passing is bad to the environment. I don't, I, I just don't like the idea of the government making somebody do that. I would rather see us do this all on our own without that. That's, maybe some people will sit there, and I think the counterargument to that is it won't happen, it won't happen fast enough. And that's, that may be a valid counterargument, you know, the only way to know is time. But I just, I wanted to point that out, because I'm probably, at least by most people's seen, is against this ordinance, and as far as voting for it, I will vote against it, but I don't disagree with the facts that have been brought up, and the idea of Bethel being a better community and a cleaner community. And I hope that even if this ordinance, if this ordinance does fail, I hope that we still continue with the idea of, of trying to move towards more eco-friendly things. I said to, to you guys in a meeting a few months ago, and I genuinely meant it, I think that no matter what happens with this ordinance, it will be a win-win to some extent for you and what your purpose is. Because at the very least, it's brought things to light that hadn't been brought to light. I can think of a couple businesses that already have, have tried to effect some change, one of them being the Mallard Mart, which, again, through this discussion, they learned that their recyclable bags were maybe not as good as they intended, but they made the change from what they were using to recyclable ones, and hopefully now they, you know. So I just, I just wanted to say that, and that's, that's pretty much all I have, so.
Any further comments or questions?
The person who comes up with a situation of getting rid of the plastic is going to be a very wealthy person.
I agree.
I think that's a start right there.
Go ahead, Laura.
I also have to say that I agree with most everything that was said. I will vote for, in favor of this. But the one thing that I disagree with, was at the beginning, that this was an attack on businesses. And although it may be felt by businesses and be hard for them to absorb, that was not the intent of, of this ordinance or any of the research that went into it. The intent was to make positive difference now, immediately, and future generations. So we can work together and solve some of the problems, but that's, that was not the intent of this ordinance.
Go ahead.
I just have one comment. I really liked what Andy said, and I'll tell you why. It took away the control. I see control up there. I see control in this town, which I'm tired of, I got to be honest with you.
I often feel like we're way out of control.
Well, you're all too controlled. But anyway, when Andy said that, it took away the control. He gave the decision up to the businesses and up to the people. Now, when you take away the control and leave it up to them, they're much more comfortable making that change than they are feeling forced. And this was a situation where I saw control and I saw force, like we've gone into a government thing here, or, I don't know what you want to call it. So thank you, Andy, for bringing that up and taking away that control, and that's a progress.
Thank you.
Well, just in terms of the government, the reason Andescogut is clean is because of the Clean Water Bill. And it was because of legislation. So sometimes we, we need to be nudged in the right direction.
And in this case, we're not really into a, shouldn't use the word government, that's not a good place to go, anyway, as we all know. But my thing is take away the control. I just feel the town has been control-y for a long time now, and I have liked it, being here since I was born and watching what's going on. Haven't been happy with it. I've been to some of the meetings, some I don't go to, because I'll get mouthy. So I just wanted to thank Andy for that, that's all.
Jonathan?
I just wanted to say that last weekend, I bought some compost that was made from garbage collected from local places, local restaurants in Sunday River and Gold Academy. And the interesting thing in my little discussion was that the compost can only have vegetable matter, no paper in it. And so what happened is the businesses that were contributing this matter didn't want to sort that stuff out, so they have changed their habits. They've, they're using much less single-serve, you know, the oyster cracker little things, the little ketchup containers that you put ketchups in. They've stopped using those things, because it doesn't work with the system that's been implemented. So change is very possible, and it happens relatively quickly. In this case, this ordinance just provides that little bit of incentive that helps us to change our habits. And I, I'm not worried that it's a government thing, because actually, it's a vote of the people. And, yeah, I think if this is a little nudge that helps us move forward in a positive direction, then it's a good thing.
Any further comments? All right, we might have to close this hearing. Thank you all very much.